Good evening, everybody. It's great to have you here. Today is April the 16th. It's 5:00 PM on the nose. So, welcome to the Woodfin Town Council meeting. The first item is the approval of the agenda. We do have one change. Topic number two, under Presentations and Reports, Ian's family, I guess, strep throat and the flu is going around with people with kids. He will present at another time. So, the agenda stands with E2 removed. Is there discussion on the agenda or is there a motion to approve it?
I move that we approve the agenda with the deletion mentioned.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anybody have concerns, want to talk about it? If not, raise your hand if you vote to approve it. Thank you very much. Next is the Consent Agenda, and as we've talked before, that there's an expectation that everybody in council has read those documents, and unless somebody speaks up and wants to move an item from Consent Agenda to further in the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Seconds. All in favor, raise your hand, please. We're going visual. Thank you very much. We now come to what some people call the favorite part of our town hall, of our town council meetings, public comment. There are four people who have signed up to speak, and we'll go in that order. Laura Cleveland, welcome.
Yeah, where do I stand?
Go to the podium, please, because you're being livestreamed to the whole entire universe.
All right. Just the way I like it.
Welcome.
Hi.
Tell us your name, tell us where you live.
I'm Laura Cleveland, and I live at 53 Summit Tower Circle here in Woodfin, and I've lived in Woodfin, not that address, but in Woodfin for 13 years.
Great.
And I'm also the school social worker at Woodfin Elementary School, and I've been working there off and on for seven to eight years. And I love this little town of Woodfin, and I'm so glad I accidentally, you know, fell into it when I was trying to figure out where to move in this area. And so, I'm very grateful for all the support of the Woodfin Council for different organizations in the area that support the families that I serve. So, I have a request and an appreciation. The first one is, I know that you all are very aware, as across the whole country, housing is an issue, and I just wanted to speak to that a little bit. When I was started seven or eight years ago at Woodfin Elementary, we definitely saw families that were doubled up, two families in a trailer. This, when I went away for a little bit, when I came back, I'm finding this year, three and four families in a trailer. That's how bad housing is getting in this area. So, hopefully, that is something that you're strategically working on. But I also wanted to thank you for your support of ABCCM. They are one of many charities that I utilize on a regular basis. It's a kind of a one-stop shop for many things in the area, so it's great for families to be able to go. I take families personally because sometimes they have transportation or other barriers, so I try and take them the first time so they can get acclimated and they can go back. So, having, being able to access, of course, the food on a monthly basis, but clothing, furniture, and then also, once a year, they can get some kind of financial support if they have, need help with a bill. And they also, some of the general funds that you guys give are a little less restrictive than some of the other agencies, so I can take some families that don't, can't get help from other agencies, I can take them there and they can get support. So, very much appreciated seeing if there was anything else I wanted to say. So, thank you for your support of ABCCM and Woodfin Elementary.
Thank you for what you do, what you do at the school specifically. It's making a difference. Rin Wilbur?
Well, we've got, I think me and Ron, I'm doing Wilbur.
Come to the podium, please, sir.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Just so everybody can hear you loud and clear.
All right. And I'm not great in front of public, so I'm sorry. We signed up, myself and Ron, we're on F1 about the road closure, and I've got some paper here to show the road closures.
Sir, if you're on F1, we are going to have a public hearing later.
I think we signed up on the wrong papers, what I was trying to say.
That's okay. Do you mind waiting until we get there?
Yeah, that's why I was going to say, did we sign up? I think we signed up on the wrong paper.
That's okay. There's no wrong paper, but if you would wait till we get through on the agenda, that'd be great.
That's what I was going to make sure.
Okay.
That's the fourth one, too, wasn't it?
Mr. Imbler, you were the other one, right? Okay. Judy Butler, welcome back.
I wanted to try it on this side. I have a lot to say, so I want to be respectful of the time limit, so if you don't mind, I'm going to read. My name is Judy Butler, and I live at 29 Newbridge Parkway. I am a community volunteer and have worked with a number of for-profit businesses and nonprofits to support the residents of the town of Woodfin. Since the beginning of COVID, I have worked with local partners, including Man of Food Bank, Catholic Charities, Woodfin Elementary School, and the town of Woodfin, to provide food to those in need at a monthly distribution at the Woodfin Community Center. As our time at the community center is coming to an end, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the town for your support. That has been so meaningful that you have opened your doors and let us do that, so we're very grateful for that. And as of today, I can also officially announce that Newbridge Baptist Church will be hosting this event starting in June.
Wonderful.
Yes, that's fabulous news. I know the pastor's relatively new to the community. He could not join us this evening, but we'll have him here so that you get to meet him at the earliest opportunity. Since September of 2020, which I believe was the first date we were at the community center, we have served over 5,800 families representing over 24,000 individuals at that monthly distribution. Although the doors don't open to clients until 3:00 PM each month, it is not unusual to have people waiting for me when I arrive at 1:00. At this last month's distribution, there was a lady actually waiting in her car at 10:00 in the morning. What you may not know is we also have a variety of wraparound services who also participate each month. Examples include AB Tech, the Omni Grove Park Inn, Buncombe County Partnership for Children, UNATE, and Buncombe County Health and Human Services, just to name a few. Our new location will provide even more space for these organizations to participate, so I'm very excited about that. It is a huge facility, and instead of having to, you know, poke people in here or there or be weather-dependent and they won't come because there's no place for them to be inside, I think we will be able to provide continuing support, and that's just another reason to get people together once a month to take advantage of all these programs available to them. I want to thank all involved who have supported this work and other outreach programs to those most in need in our community that the town has supported. I welcome any of you who may not have had an opportunity to attend one of these events to please contact me if you wish to do so. It is something to see, and thank you for your time and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Judy. Is there anyone that wanted to make any public comment that did not sign the list? We're going to wait on the public hearing for the easement.
I'm going to speak on plastic waste. Is that an hour, is that better?
Please come to the podium, introduce yourself. We're a small town and we get some flexibility. I like it.
Hey, good evening, y'all. My name's Drew Ball. It's good to see y'all. I, I work for the Natural Resources Defense Council, but I'm also on the board of the North Carolina Sierra Club and the Western North Carolina Sierra Club, and I was actually told earlier today that you all would be considering a resolution on reducing plastic waste, and so I wanted to hurry up here, took my last call from the car, just to really say thank you. I know that at the state level, it's been difficult. I've worked on this issue as the lobbyist for the Sierra Club back in North Carolina in 2010, back when Senator Josh Stein was running a bill to ban plastic bags in the Outer Banks, and, you know, your leadership on this is really appreciated in spite of what we're seeing at the state level. We know this is a public health issue. Microplastics end up in our bodies, make us sick. It harms our wildlife, harms our environment, and it harms our climate. The projections for how much the plastic waste crisis, the production of plastic is going to be contributing to plastics in the future is astronomical, and this is an issue, this is a problem that's growing. It hasn't really been around just since the 50s and 60s, and we've seen it just explode. So, this leadership here at the local level really makes a big difference, and actually I was on a call today, NRDC, Natural Resources Defense Council, did some national polling on how much folks want to see action on this, how much they're likely to support elected officials that take action on plastic waste, and I'll sum it up by saying it's up there with apple pie. I mean, 85, 90%. And actually, I'm really excited because we did a statewide poll. We were able to ask two questions statewide, and I'm not joking when I say I'm getting that on my phone right now. So, this is breaking news. The pollster just got back to us, and we asked two questions. We said, recent studies have shown plastics in the human body can cause links to obesity, heart attack, stroke, infertility, premature births, and developmental disorders. How concerned are you about plastic waste and their impact on human health? Very concerned, somewhat concerned, not too concerned, not at all concerned, barrier somewhat, 88% statewide concerned about plastic waste. The other question we asked was, would you support or oppose state government action to reduce single-use plastics in order to protect human health and the environment? Support, 82% across the state. So, I just want to let you know the public is with you. Please continue to work on this. I know this is one piece of your environmental agenda, but your leadership is really greatly appreciated, and again, just want to thank you for all your leadership and work.
Thank you for coming. Would you make sure the town clerk has your name for the record?
Yes, sir.
She's right behind you. Anyone else? Last chance. All right, great. We're going to move into Section 8, Presentations and Reports, and the first one is mine. Many of you are already aware that each year, one day is set aside globally to mobilize over 1 billion people, to make them aware of the dangers facing our planet and to act on ways to save it. I hope you'll listen while I make the following Earth Day proclamation. Whereas on April 22nd, 1970, millions of people took to the streets for the first time to improve the negative impacts of 150 years of industrial development, and since then, millions of people have celebrated Earth Day in order to increase the awareness among people of the issues affecting the environment in which we live. And whereas in the last 10 years, we have made more and more plastic, and this is both dangerous for both the environmental, for the environment and our health, and whereas Kathleen Rogers, who represents earthday.org, tells us that plastic is everywhere, even inside us, which is bad for our health. There are small pieces of plastic called microplastics, which are getting into our food, water, and air, and as was recently discovered by scientists, actually into the water inside the recycled plastic bottles of water that we drink. Whereas Dennis Hayes and other Earth Day activists says that the petrochemical industry makes a tremendous amount of plastic and is a big part of the problem in that they typically build their factories in poor areas and hurt those people in the environment there, and that most items like plastic bags and drinking bottles are not recycled, and making plastic bottles uses a massive amount of water. Whereas the theme for 2024 is Planet vs. Plastics, with the goal of increasing awareness of the health risk of plastics, the phasing out of all unnecessary single-use plastics, an end to fast fashion, and ultimately, a future without so much plastic. Whereas the town of Woodfin wishes to join in all of the other environmentally-minded jurisdictions around the world celebrating Earth Day. Now therefore, I, James McAllister, Mayor of the town of Woodfin, do hereby proclaim Monday, April 22nd of this year is Earth Day, and in support of less plastic and a healthier planet, encourage you and all of us to avoid single-use plastics such as drinking straws, switch to reusable water bottles or coffee mugs, carry and use recycled or reusable shopping bags when you go shopping, be mindful of synthetic clothing when shopping for clothes, recycle plastic waste in the correct recycling containers, and try to reuse plastic containers instead of throwing them away. Proclaim this the 16th day of April 2024. Thank you for your attention. Item number three is an update from ABCCM Crisis Ministry on the Impact of Our Community Grant. Please welcome Cheryl Olson.
Thank you so much for supporting your folk in the town of Woodfin. It was been, it has been my pleasure to speak and counsel with all the folk that come in that need assistance. As you know, rent has gone through the roof, and people are struggling in the last two years. Is there not a presentation on there? There's supposed to be. What do I hit?
Down here, over here. You can just click through them.
We couldn't do any of these things without your assistance. Of course, rent is the most. Rent in Woodfin is anywhere from 6 to 18 to $2,000 a month. And during the, this is since December of '22, so this is all of the last year and a half. Utility is not as prevalent because there's other federal programs around to be able to help with that, but there are the few that have already used those programs and needed oil or needed some electrical assistance, and we were happy to be able to do that. We are sure to tell them that it is the gift of town of Woodfin, that it is your fund that is assisting them, and it makes all the difference. Sorry. We have totally, since December of '22, helped 56 different households, and we've helped them with all of those things.
Go back, go back. Let's spend just a second on that slide.
Sure.
This is good data.
So, we are seeing more and more Hispanic folk, which is wonderful, and I think part of that has to do with the Woodfin Community Center doing, telling them where to go, and I've been there, not as much as I would like to be, but I have been there as well.
Okay, thank you.
So, the one that I picked out to talk to you about was Taquana. She's 29 years old, and she is very young and has just found out that she needs kidney dialysis. She works for the VA, and they have graciously let her work from home. She lives in an apartment that's $1,600 a month, and it's difficult. She's gotten somewhat extra help from Department of Human Health Services through an ERA program or emergency rental program. She just found out now that she is a diabetic, and so she was in just yesterday, which was interesting after I sent this, and needed help with electric. I referred her to a federal program, and she's been a follow-through with that, and also another program that Evelyn Charities has that might help her because she's a single person living in the county. I can't, it just blesses me to be able to sit and talk with each one of them, and I just ask for your continued support in this. Thank you.
Any questions for Cheryl from council?
I have a question.
Would you stay? Yeah, go ahead.
Cheryl, I'll start by just saying that I cook in the kitchen over at VRQ.
Nice.
And I'm familiar with a lot of what you do. How do you, I understand what you're doing. How do you, how do you screen or qualify folks for this type of assistance?
I've been with the ministry for 28 years, and I directed the main office at 24 Cumberland, and so I'm very schooled in how to deflect from the ministry and go to the federal programs first. So, we tried to do that before. So, when I decide to use the Woodfin Fund, it's because there is no other avenue.
And in terms of need and applicants, how do you screen there? Is it simply an interview process?
We have a form that we do an income-outgo and see what's going on and isolate the crisis. It has to be a crisis. You know, it's really, you're not going to be able, you're going to be evicted, or you're going to, your electricity is going to be turned off. So, it's, we're not bill payers, so whenever someone comes in, they're either in disconnect or they have gotten an eviction notice.
I understand. Thank you.
Other questions from council members?
This is, I'm curious, and this is just from my understanding, it doesn't have anything to do with those that are in Woodfin, but if someone finds themselves in a disconnect situation, Progre Synergy or, do they have programs to that help, or are they just like...
Duke does have a program. We do not administer that program.
Woodfin Water has a program.
Yes.
For their customers that...
Evelyn Charities administers that. The Department of Human Health Services disperses something called Share the Light, and I would love to have that program, but they have it, and it's, I believe it's something like a $600 allotment toward helping people.
Okay.
So, that's when in your bill, when you get the dollars, please put a dollar extra in there. That's where that goes.
That's good to know. That makes me feel a little bit better about them.
And Department of Human Health Services refers to us, you know, to all our sites because we have four crisis sites.
And are you seeing an uptick in referrals from Woodfin Elementary School?
Um...
More than in the past?
Not necessarily from the school. Laura, I did not realize that she was a social worker over there, and so I've connected with her a couple times, so she kind of, you know, made segue of me coming on here.
Good.
So...
That's the way it's supposed to work.
But Laura can do that, and I'll school her in that.
Okay. Council members, anybody else have questions, comments, concerns?
Just thank you for carefully administering, you know, handling the fund. It's money that we wanted to go directly to Woodfin residents in need, and you guys have made that happen, and thank you for that.
If only the little townships would do that, Weaverville and all, it would just be wonderful.
Good to be in Woodfin. Thank you.
Peer pressure.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. The next item is a presentation on the strategic priorities of the Asheville-Buncombe Riverfront Commission, of which Councilmember Johanna Young represents us on. Our friend Ann Keller is going to talk about that. You can always move chairs if you're being blinded, Ann.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
The sun in this room.
I'm blinded by the light.
[laughing]
Yes. All right, just to keep me from going over, I'm going to put my timer on. Thank you all for allowing me to come and give you an update on the Riverfront Commission. We've been lucky to have Mayor McAllister on for a while, and when he got elected, Johanna joined the commission. It is, it is, I think, something that you all, many of you know about it already, but we wanted to update you a little bit with where we are and what we're trying to do, and a little bit about the past, so let me just get started with it. The background is brief. The commission was started as the Asheville Area Riverfront Redevelopment Commission in 2009, and mainly that was to, I guess you might say, facilitate conversation among the different parties in the River Arts District who were arguing and fighting about, you know, too much environment, too much economic development, or whatever it was, and the city decided that bringing people together in a commission where they could sit and talk and look and have input on what was going to happen next would be really beneficial. So, that was the beginning of it, and in the beginning, we were looking at designs for projects and details, you know, where the roads were going, all that sort of stuff. We decided last year to spend pretty much the whole year, and the mayor was involved in all this back and forth, looking at the ordinance and talking about what we should be doing to adjust it and what was still needed to stay and so forth. A lot has changed since the beginning of the commission. Just to highlight the reason that the commission was established, I think it's really important. It was to strengthen and maintain Asheville and the county's riverfront corridors and districts as crucial, as critical and sustainable contributors to Western North Carolina's economic, residential, cultural, and visitor activities. In other words, without the river, we would be in a whole different place, all of us, in terms of not only our daily appreciation of it, but everything that we have to share in terms of our culture and economics and everything. So, it's a really, I think, important reason to have the commission. Just to give you a frame of reference, the regional riverfront corridor that the commission works within is the area in Buncombe County's jurisdiction that's near the French Broad and/or Swananoa rivers, and, you know, some of it's really obviously riverfront, but other parts of it are affecting it, and that's considered riverfront because they have impacts on, on the whole corridor, that, the area. And then there's the Riverfront District, which is the River Arts District. If you want to think of it that way, then the city's boundaries and adjacent extraterritorial areas, both on the French Broad and the Swananoa, and I'll show you a map here in a second, especially the areas that are outlined in the Wilma Dyckman Riverway Master Plan. So, those are the areas that we're focusing on. This is the regional riverfront, and as you can see, the commission has interest and wants to be involved with the region from Black Mountain to Woodfin, and Woodfin's been a member of this commission since the beginning. We just added Black Mountain as a member in the last few months. So, now we have participation from both ends and in the middle, which I think is really helpful. This is more of the Riverfront District. You can see the Swananoa on the right in the lower part, and it runs into the French Broad and goes through the River Arts District. So, it's a small part of it, and a lot of it has been done, you know? A lot of the revamping and the economic development and so forth has been completed there, so it made sense to think about some other things as well this, now. Design review for projects was consolidated from our commission with the Downtown Commission, so now there's a design review group that we are represented on that actually looks at both of those different areas. So, we don't do that really detailed work, although we do still get presentations about projects and ask questions and get input. We held a River Summit in September of 2022, which was pretty well-attended, I think, and out of that, we learned that, you know, we knew, of course, already that there were water quality issues. Most of the area that you saw on those maps has impaired waters, either due to sediment or bacteria, and that should be of concern to all of us. So, that was one outcome we need to pay attention to. We need to work with others, and we need to maybe focus on some more education so that a lot of other people who aren't paying attention, like many of us are, have interest and understand that they need to contribute, and they need to think about some things that maybe they're not thinking about. So, the revised ordinance really reflects these inputs. It acknowledges the regional aspect of all of it. It looks to continue the economic and environmental, you know, protection slash development all along the river, and our name change reflects the larger perspective, Asheville-Buncombe Riverfront Commission, saying, okay, we, and from the beginning, it was included, but it wasn't named, and so we thought it was really helpful to maybe bring some more clarity about that. And as I said, we added Black Mountain seat. We also have a seat that the county appoints for the Swananoa region, and somebody from the Asheville Housing Authority, since a lot of folks live down there in that area near the river, and they hadn't had any representation on the commission. Some of these seats are still to be filled. We're in the process. I think we have about five new members and two or three empties still, just getting, you know, advertised and out there, so a lot of good blood, new insights.
The same notorious vacancies as when I served? Probably.
Um, no, there's new ones.
Okay, that...
Yeah.
Okay, fair.
And Johanna's there now, causing good trouble. Yes, sir.
Are there any, are there any seats reflecting the art community, specifically like ABL Arts or the RADA?
There is an arts, artist position or a seat vacant right now that's being advertised, so somebody needs to take that. The Housing Authority, the artists, I think somebody just stepped off from the chamber, maybe, I think, just this last month, so those are waiting to be filled. And so, what we decided to focus on this year, and we'll get more input from the city, and welcome thoughts from everybody here, is to review the comp plans from Black Mountain, Woodfin, the county, city of Asheville, perhaps others that might be out there, and other important documents to see what is in those. Where are there areas of collaboration, maybe? Where are there some things that aren't, you know, that might be a little challenging or... Where are there some things that aren't, you know, that might be a little challenging or conflicted? And then try to meet with people and talk and see if we can pull together some good conversation about this. And then we're going to review, another group in the, in the commission is reviewing the Wilma Dyckman Plan and seeing like where are we in this whole thing and moving more towards the Swananoa now, and that's good. And then lastly, they'll be looking at updating the design guidelines for the River Arts District. Even though we're not looking at some of those projects, the expertise still exists. And people are, the city needs help looking at those design guidelines. And so I think some folks on our commission are going to go ahead and give help with that. I pretty much made it, didn't I? Within my time. Thank you all and questions, please. Yes, sir.
Sure. How many seats do you have?
I'm sorry, how?
How many seats do you have?
Seats? Oh, there are 14, I think.
And would you say that in summary, you're kind of a consultative body that also lobbies local constituencies? Is lobby too strong or I don't see it as a negative. I'm just asking.
There is part of the, you know, the assignment, if you will, to, to, to offer education and to bring people, if there is some kind of discussion, something to bring people to participate. The other part you asked, oh, the city council usually gives commissions and, and other related organizations assignments. You know, we need your input on this. We need you to look at this, tell us what you think. This is what we're doing. And so that has traditionally been part of the work as well.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Anything else? Well, we hope that you will continue to support Johanna. And, you know, if you have questions or comments about things that need to be considered, you know, pass them through her and give us a chance to see if we can help.
Thank you for coming in. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Town Manager's Report. Shannon Tuck is onstage as star.
Thank you, Mayor. So Town Manager Report, I typically cover happenings in the organization in the last month, usually beginning with the Administration Department. And we like to report on any new contracts or purchase orders or significant purchase orders that have come in the last month. For many months, I've been reporting that there's one contract, no contracts. Okay, now, as we approach budget season, all of these contracts start rolling in as things get renewed. Two of the more significant ones are part of an inter-local agreement between the town and other municipalities in Bunkham County and Bunkham County for the PSIP and CDE programs. PSIP stands for the Public Service Interoperability Program. And CDE is Consolidated Entry or Consolidated Data.
Centralized Data Entry.
That's it. Centralized Data Entry. Related functions, the town is part of a countywide effort to look at these consolidated services that we share for public, public safety. And the town, you all authorized me to enter into this agreement or this contract with Bunkham County several months ago, many months ago. Other towns had some questions and some concerns about the agreements. There was some back and forth. So it's taken these many months to get all of that ironed out. And the agreements have now been signed and submitted. So PSIP is for 2024. The contract amount was 58,606. And then for CDE, 17,790 dollars. We also approved just this week a contract with Power Marketing for 7,124. Council may recall authorizing staff to supply up to $10,000 to the Woodfin Business Association as sort of seed money to kind of launch that organization and the development of a website. Once this contract is satisfied moving forward, all of that will be handled by the WBA themselves. So the town won't be, have any ongoing commitments. And then lastly, a contract for Cook's Mechanical to replace some HVAC equipment in the community center. We've discovered a few other things in the community center that need fixing and we're working on that as well.
And everybody will acknowledge it's mislabeled on the slide. That's okay.
Yeah.
Mislabeled?
Look at the parentheses.
The WBA website.
Oh, I'm sorry. That got carried over. Yeah, yeah, that's for the HVAC replacement. I'm sorry about that.
Be clear. Thank you.
Other things happening in the Administration Department, of course, we are in the middle of budget season, so working on the fiscal year 2025 budget. Council members may also recall that we switched our health insurance plan last year. And because we were on an odd cycle, the League of Municipalities, which is the organization that we've moved to, allowed us to do more than a one-year agreement. So we have completed, I think, the first six months and now we're rolling into that first full year. So we'll be on fiscal year moving forward. So that's great news. Makes things a lot simpler. And, but because we are completing half of one year and now starting a new year, we have to do open enrollment again. So we're getting ready for that. We have also started to look at updates to the town's personnel manual. This council didn't support the adoption of the original personnel manual, but it was a version that was largely gleaned from Bunkham County's. So there's some, some language in there that sort of describes layers of administration and process that isn't really applicable for the town of Woodfin and a few other things that we probably need to update. So we're starting to look at that for, you know, coming months. We'll probably bring a revised version before council. And then lastly, council approved the town moving forward with authorizing some leases, one for the community garden at the Geneva Maney Park, and then a second for the community center with the Friends Montessori School. So we're in the process of putting those together as well. We know that the lease for the Friends Montessori will return to council for final approval on, in May. But we're moving forward with the school to kind of get some of the, the repair work and other, other improvements going, so. In the planning and facilities, Public Works Facilities Department's, Planning Department is working on our table of uses. If you're not familiar with that, in our zoning code, we have a large table that describes different kinds of land uses or, you know, things like, and if your land uses, you generally refer to things like the types of activities that can occur. So retail or manufacturing or medical clinics, things like that. Those are all land uses that are typically found in tables. And then it identifies in which zoning district are these different kinds of land uses permitted. So the table is quite old. It includes a lot of uses that you would not normally find, not only in Woodfin, but just about anywhere anymore. Uses some outdated language. There's also some discrepancies between code and the table. And so some of this needs to be cleaned up and our planning staff have started work on that. We are also close to having a street acceptance policy ready to bring before council for adoption. We've coincidentally received a couple of requests for street acceptance. And so this has given us an opportunity to kind of examine those requests and to then go back to the policy and see is there anything we need to adjust. So those requests will also likely be before council before soon, before long. Policies should come first and then those requests will probably follow after. For facilities, I mentioned the, um, the town hall and community center HVAC improvements and some other work. We did discover while investigating the HVAC condition at the community center that we had a hole in the ceiling and that was causing some ceiling damage, water infiltration. And so we had to get that fixed up and we're looking at a few other more minor improvements as well. In the Stormwater and Parks Departments, first for stormwater, we are moving forward with the Church Street Stormwater Culvert Repair. We have a informal bid proposal ready to go. And hopefully we'll get that resolved soon and, and get work started there. Coincidentally, we learned today there was a small stormwater issue. Well, not that small, a small sinkhole formed down near the intersection of Riverside Drive and Woodfin. And that is, it does appear to be on private property, possibly part of the state's stormwater system. But it's a good example of not what happens when we don't maintain our stormwater infrastructure properly creates these kinds of issues. We are also working with the Reynolds Mountain Community on getting the easements worked out for the Lake Town Lane stormwater improvements. I got, I believe, the final plat today. We need to look it over and make sure everything is covered, but I'm sure it is. And then hopefully that work will get started soon as well. You, we introduced our new stormwater administrator to council last month. So in this last 30 days or so, there's been a lot of work between Adrienne Eisenhower, our Project and Facilities Director, and Ricky Hurley, our Planning Director, on training and, and getting our stormwater administrator up to speed. And then lastly, council approved last month, uh, stormwater billing amendment that would allow, if approved by the General Assembly, would allow us or allow Bunkham County to include the stormwater fees, the town stormwater fees on the tax bill. This should significantly increase our collection rate. And if that's the case, the intent is to lower the town's stormwater fee correspondingly. So this is an effort to reduce costs for all of our residents. And then in the Parks Department, Riverside Park and Taylor's Wave, we are working on an inter-local agreement with Bunkham County. I think, I think council members are aware that the, a good portion of the funding for Riverside Park and Taylor's Wave comes from the Tourism Development Authority through their TPDF Fund. The agreement for those funds to be dispersed is with Bunkham County. And then the town would establish an inter-local agreement with Bunkham County to be reimbursed ourselves. So we would pay the contractor, the county would pay us, and then the TDA would pay the county. And that's just how it's structured. So we're working on that inter-local agreement with Bunkham County now and hope to have that done in the next month or so. Silverline restrooms are also, the council during one of your budget work sessions identified some or identified some questions related to costs. The PGAC met last week. We have some more information to share at your next, next budget work session, so we'll cover that then. And then lastly, river and park cleanup activities are going right now. Our AmeriCorps volunteer coordinator is helping to organize with Asheville Greenworks, but also outside of Asheville Greenworks, different cleanup efforts along the river and inner parks and other locations too. Actually, some of this cleanup is occurring just on street sides and, and other locales. Then lastly, for our Police Department, recruitment and retention, always top of the list. That is one of the biggest priorities right now. We have had some encouraging interest in some of our vacancies. And so those, further conversations with those individuals is occurring. So hopefully I'll have some good news to report soon. The basement renovation is well underway. We had to kind of pause some of the, the wall work and some of the building work to get some HVAC stuff resolved. And that's all done now. So now we hope to get that wrapped up before long. And then the evidence room inventory. We, when we hired our new evidence custodian several months ago, we would normally conduct an inventory, but we did not have, well, the, first of all, the renovation was underway. And then also our evidence custodian was also helping to cover our front desk. But now that we have our new part-time front desk receptionist starting in May, that allows us to free her up to go to training and then start some of this inventory work. So we are expecting a full evidence room inventory to be completed in the next several months or less. And that concludes my manager's report. Is there any questions?
Questions from council about any item?
I had one on the contracts. PSIP, is that different from the PSAP agreement that we have with the county? Are those the same thing or?
I, I'm not sure what PSAP is. PSIP is the agreement we discussed many months ago with the county.
Okay, the 911 call center.
Yeah, the PSAP agreement has, that Twilight, we all have a PSAP agreement, Bunkham County. They absorb those calls for 911 dispatch.
Okay, so this replaces the, okay.
Yeah, it's actually separate. So the PSAP is the, the voice part, the 911 call center.
Okay.
And then PSIP is the, we used to call it the CGIS, which is the, the governance management CAD integration, the kind of the software part. And that's the, the agreement that has transitioned from CGIS into PSIP.
Got it. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
I, I should have mentioned too, CDE, PSIP's a multi-year process as we look for new software, new, you know, new vendor. It's possible that CDE will end up being folded into PSIP. We just don't know yet. So for the time being, we've agreed for this, this agreement, Bunkham County to help share or do some cost sharing for CDE until we know what the future is.
Shannon, how many years have we done the PSIP and CDE contracts?
PSIP is new. CD, CD is new this year. PSIP, well, the agreement begins in fiscal year 23, so it would have started last year. But there was some, as I mentioned, it got delayed, implementation got delayed. Bunkham County's been moving forward with some action and now that the agreements are in place. It's also multi-jurisdictional, so we had to get the other jurisdictions on board, so.
So it's premature to ask whether there have been any initiatives or achievements out of that.
Yeah, brand new.
To contracts. Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Thank you very much. We'll move into New Business Section F. The first is, we'll have a public hearing after we talk about ordinance 2024-09, requesting to close approximately 400 feet of an unnamed right-of-way located between 35 and 41 Fox Road and 8 New Hope Road. The petitioners are Daniel Embler, Karen Embler, Ronald Wilburn, and Donna Wilburn. First Ricky Hurley will talk to the council about this ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor, for the introduction there. Hopefully this is a fairly straightforward request, I'm hoping. So we're kind of zoomed in really close, but frame of reference, you have the two requesters' properties. The Wilburns are to the right or east here and the Emblers are to the left or west. At the top center of the screen is Fox Drive, which is a town-maintained street that is open, that we maintain. At the bottom, you have two, it's OMB Road is the bottom left and then New Hope Road kind of carries off to the right. Those are state-maintained roads. And then in the middle of the screen, you see kind of the striped area, that is the 30-foot right-of-way that is unopened. It's basically full of trees. And meeting with Mr. Embler and Mr. Wilburn out there a couple of months ago, they had done a survey and everybody thought that everything was kind of more tilted like almost north-south. But when they had a survey done, they found that obviously Mr. Wilburn's family, prior family member's home is way up in the right-of-way. Basically, it's almost fully across. And Mr. Embler discovered that the home up there at the top is out of the right-of-way about, about two to four feet. But they found that the septic tank itself is beside of the home and actually kind of carries over into that. Now, we didn't actually, during that time, it's been a wet year. We haven't seen, you know, with grass not growing anything. Couldn't figure out maybe where the tail lines are at. But he did know that the actual tank itself is in this right-of-way. And I think everything's, the area developed well before any modern surveying or any type of permits were required. And I can let the petitioners tell you the age of the homes, but they've been out there well over 50 years and predate anything that Woodfin would have been involved with or probably Bunkham County. So just going back, this is historical plat. This plat dates back to 1919, so it's pretty old. But this is, you know, pretty relevant still today. The roads are pretty much in the location shown on the plat, which is sometimes shocking in the mountains. And it's known as Third Street on the plat, but there's multiple Third Streets in Bunkham County. There's, I don't know how many Third Streets I've run across. Have you, Shannon? They're everywhere. I think everybody just puts them in. But that's the right-of-way and that's that. So basically what they're looking to do is if the request is granted, they would technically, we would close it and they would get half of each side of that. They have told me verbally they had planned to work out a deal to split it more north-south. But they'll be responsible for securing a surveyor and recording that modified plat and we'll work with them on that sort of recombination on it. Seems like some neighbors. That said, there's no sewer, as we all know, on the side of the river. So that's a limiting factor out there. You'd have to have septic system. There is some Woodfin water. They're, they're suffering from pressure issues, I think on Fox Drive, I've heard just from Mr. Embler. So there is some water, but there is some limitation. And it's R10, so you need at least 10,000 square feet. But you know, as I said, septic tanks required. With that, I don't think it's going to preclude a lot more, there, there's not really much more development potential beyond what you can build out here with that, with the septic system as the way it is. And they do have adequate road fringes for further subdivision. Any questions? I'm talking, yes, ma'am?
I have one. I went out there and looked at the area. There was never a road, I mean, obviously, nothing. It's all grass, wood, and?
Very treed.
Okay, that's, I saw nothing that indicated there was even any kind of a path.
And it's got a pretty good drop to that. As you get to that south half, it kind of picks up that slope. So there would be some potential erosion issues if that road were to be opened, and it'd be probably long-term.
When we refer to unopened right-of-way, it means there never was?
Never was one, okay. Yeah, I couldn't, I could tell there was nothing, so.
And for a plat that was recorded in 1919, if the road's not open now, there probably, oftentimes, we find there's a reason for it. You know, either it's a polygraphy or other things to prevent using it in the way that it was originally drawn.
Right.
It's usually, oftentimes, a very easy analysis.
Yeah.
Yeah, as you look at the plat, there's no lots to be cut off or landlocked. That's one of the other concerns that we usually look for, is that will it landlocked? Any tracks? And there's not any of that going to occur?
Other questions from council? Is there a wish or a desire to hear from the petitioners? Are we ready to, we're going to have, before we have a public hearing?
They speak after.
All right. Pardon me. We're going to have a public hearing, which we will open. If there are no further questions from council to Ricky at 5:50 on the nose. And those who wish to speak as part of the public hearing can?
All right. Nice to meet y'all. Thank you for taking this on. I really do appreciate it. Myself, Daniel Embler, that's Ron Wilburn, and the neighbors. I've lived in Woodson since 1998. I have a house on Fox Road, and I've lived there since '98. Ron's been my neighbor's, he's been there a lot longer than I have. And I have took care of the house at 35 Fox Road, Mr. Sawyer, for years. And after he passed away, I took it over. And I am now moving my elderly parents in there this Friday to put them in there. And what we found out, the house is 1925. It's made in 1925. And on the side of the, I guess facing y'all is on the side that has the more grass in our house on 35. Well, first off, it's Fox Road and not Drive. So that got mistaken some way. It's Fox Road. So where the little small driveway is on that side of the road, back in the day, what Charlie told us was that there's a little small driveway right there. And back in the day, everybody got together and just decided to put water lines back then. So there's three water lines in that little bitty driveway right there. That's, it's older water lines that's still in use. But what we're going to try to do is like move the driveway over a little bit out of that. So that easement on the other side, we have found out that the septic is at the edge of the house on the right-of-way. And we, I had a septic guy come out, run the lines, chase the lines, and they're down up behind the house. So they don't go down in that right-of-way. We found that. But it is, this was, like you said, the survey was way back in 1919, I think. And it's never going to be opened by me, and Ron decided to. We're never, we're never going to sell. We're going to be there until they bury us. So it would be really easy if this was closed. And if I had to, on that side, put a little driveway myself to get the ramp in, to get my parents in that-a-way, and not have to go over this water line. Because Ron's water line, his house is down here. Ron's runs directly through the driveway all the way down to his house. And my water down to 44 Fox is there, and it runs through there, across the road, through Chris's house, and then down to my house. So back then, they just done it the way they, they had to do it. Like, everybody got together, got a shovel, and done what they needed to do. So I don't see any, any negative about closing this. All I think, see that there's nothing that it can, I don't, I just, we just don't need anybody to open it up for some reason later on and try to put a road, which I don't think is even possible, like Ricky said. I mean, he's helped me through all this a lot. So, I mean, I don't know if there's any other questions I can ask other than, we would like to have it closed if there's any way possible. I don't, I'm not good at speaking in all this, so I'm trying to work through it as I can.
You've done a perfect job of this, sir.
So, I mean, I didn't know he had all that. I made out, printed out some stuff, so I don't know if there's anything else y'all need from me or Ron.
Questions from council?
No, certainly, sir.
Is, one other question, I'm sorry. Is it, if you do decide to close it, to do, to do like the half and half, is that something that y'all would decide before it's registered? Or is it something that we do after all of that? Is that way it is? I don't know the system, so. Okay, okay. I just didn't know how all that worked.
The ordinance, if approved, will allow you to do all of that.
Okay, okay. That's what I need to know.
Okay.
All right, I appreciate it, y'all. Thank you.
Any different information that needs to be shared?
No, just that my family's been there since the 50s. I've lived there since the 60s.
Would you come to the microphone and say that? Let's capture this history. We often forget to. Tell us your name again.
Ron Wilburn.
Mr. Wilburn, thank you.
My family's been on our property since the 50s. My grandparents built the house, laid the water lines. All the buildings are there, they built over the years since the 50s to now. As Daniel said, I don't think there's any, any need to ever open that road. We'd never do anything with it. Daniel, he may have plans, whatever, and I don't have any plans for anything. It's just that, you know, it looks like it'd create more problems than it would solve by opening the road up.
Questions for Mr. Wilburn from council? Thank you very much, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council as part of this public hearing? After what, 105 years? And I will close this public hearing at 5:55 PM in 105 years. Thank you, Ricky.
With that, I don't know, Shannon, I don't, I don't think I put a recommendation.
It is in the packet?
Yes, it is in the staff.
Is the, council will hear a motion if someone wants to make it?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I move to approve the petition of the right-of-way closure at 35 Fox Road and 8 New Hope Road as currently submitted as it's in the public interest and meets the development needs of the community in that the closure request, one, will eliminate two existing non-conformities, and two, will not impede access to existing property or preclude further subdivision or infill development.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion?
Just want to point out, because this is the first one that we've had new council members for. The reason this is kind of hugely important is because there's a weird law from the 1800s in North Carolina that says if you put your house or any structure in a right-of-way, even if it's unopened like this, you never gain the right to permanently keep it there unless the right-of-way goes away. So in theory, at any point, the government could come in and tell you you have to move your house out of it. And so closing the right-of-way takes that possibility off the table. And so it's a great deal more security for the property owners. And in such, like, the only argument against ever doing it would be is if there's a connectivity need. But here, you've got OMB making the connection just however many hundred feet off to the side. So there's no lost connectivity. So on balance, the benefit to the property owners is huge. And then the loss to connectivity is basically nothing. So it makes sense to me.
Thank you for that.
Jim, I have just one question. So I understand everything I've heard. This small piece right here?
That stays open.
That stays open because you got a fourth street. All right, just making sure I understand it.
It's good. Other questions from council? Yes, sir?
He said that one whole small piece. If you look at the, the Fourth Street over the years, it's actually come down a little bit. So it don't look like it comes and goes up. It's a straight shot into that. So it wouldn't be like this and then up. It's actually a road that goes straight into it. So it's not exactly, yeah, there you go. It's kind of like boat where it's not, where it goes up and then over.
Understood, thank you.
Streets moved over 105 years. Other questions from council? There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimously approved. Thank you for your, for your patience.
Thank you.
All right. Next item number two is consideration of resolution 2024-05 regarding a de-annexation request from certain Woodfinn residents. Town manager, Ms. Tuck.
Thank you, Mayor. So just to provide a little background and timeline, the area on the west side of the river that we commonly refer to as West Woodfinn was annexed by the town in September of 2006. In the fall of 2023, well, and I should back up and say, after an annexation, towns are, or any annexing municipality would be required to provide services to that area. There's a 12-month waiting period after the annexation is adopted, before it becomes effective. So beginning in September of 2007, the town began supplying services to the residents of West Woodfinn. So for about 17 years, this, this went on. And then in the fall of 2023, we received a petition signed by a number of residents, 183, representing a little over 200 properties, requesting that the town support removing their properties from the town's jurisdiction. And this is what we refer to as de-annexation. So the opposite of annexation, removing properties, de-annexation. Residents in the annexation area excluding Crest Mountain, and I should say that 2006 annexation area was quite a large area, which included in the southwest corner, the community of Crest Mountain. Crest Mountain pretty quickly came out when this petition was circulating, saying that they were not interested in de-annexation. So for the area that we studied, it generally did not include Crest Mountain. We excluded them. But for everybody else, they were invited to a community meeting that was held on February 1st at the Buncombe County Training Facility. It was a pretty well-attended meeting. We had about 40 residents, as well as some members of the media and some of our local delegation. And folks were given the opportunity to share their concerns and their reasons for de-annexation. And council just sort of treated it primarily as a listening session to kind of get this, this information from the community. Those comments, concerns, reasons was subsequently reviewed and discussed by the council at the February 27th, 2024 annual retreat. So just about a week later, council already had the retreat scheduled, and so there was an opportunity to discuss that. After that communating and council retreat, we, council directed staff to send letters to everybody in the affected area, inviting them to share more information or any, anything else that they wanted to hear, or just to call. And if they had any questions, we provided both an email as well as a phone number. We received four emails from that effort, and we sent out over 400 letters. So pretty, pretty low response. And then a little additional background. De-annexations are not approved by the residents. They're not approved by the town leadership. They are approved by the North Carolina General Assembly. So a de-annexation has to be introduced as a bill to the general assembly, and then they would take it up and decide to vote on it. And it's typically introduced by your local delegation or by your local state senator. To date, no bill has been introduced. But it's still a good idea for the town to take an official position. Initially, when residents reached out, we didn't want to immediately say, oh, whoa, that would be crazy, we wouldn't support it, or anything along those lines. We thoughtfully studied it and tried to weigh all of the, their reasons and considerations for de-annexation and explore what potential impacts or other considerations needed to be identified before making a decision. So now, Woodfinn Town Council is prepared to take that official position on the de-annexation request, and that associated resolution was included in your packets. I think it was 2024-05. A little analysis that was explained or included in your staff report. Concerns cited by the residents were largely found to be outside the town's control or responsibilities. So there were references to lack of maintenance on state-maintained roads, which the town would not be responsible for maintaining state roads. Lack of water and sewer infrastructure, which also fall outside the town's responsibility and authority. Both of those are managed by independent authorities. The Woodfinn Water District and the Metropolitan Sewerage District are responsible for those services. And it should be noted, too, that infrastructure, both roads, as well as utility infrastructure, are typically built and extended by developers or property owners, not by municipality, not by a water authority or sewer authority either. The authorities take over maintenance, just like we do with roads, but we don't typically build them. So typically, a developer would build it and then ask the town or the other authorities to maintain that structure. Other services that the town provided were, began, excuse me, were initiated in 2007, including solid waste collection and then later recycling collection, police protection, zoning enforcement, among other things. And they were consistently provided during that time period. So all of the services that people on the east side of the river, the exact same set of services are provided by the town on the west side of the river. And then lastly, the petition, when you map the petition of the people who signed, you see a very kind of scattershot pattern. So to move forward with a de-annexation, you would have to kind of create a consolidated, delineated, contiguous assemblage of properties. So being, we would be unable to act on just the petitioner's request for de-annexation. We would have to necessarily, and so would the general assembly, would necessarily have to exclude some people who wanted to be de-annexed and include people who wanted to stay in the town. So that kind of creates some concern of inequity between the residents. And then in response to the concerns that we heard, staff have continued to work with our utility providers and our congressman's office to explore opportunities to extend public sewer and water. Again, this is not a service that the town provides, but in as much as we can support the extension of service to improve the quality of life for our residents or to promote sensible growth and development, then we would want to be a part of that and do what we can. So we are taking steps to see what else can we explore. Leadership has also acted quickly to approve ordinance changes, expanding options for manufactured housing west of the river and to decriminalize certain penalties. These were two things that we heard at that community meeting and, you know, quickly took action on to address those concerns from members in that area. And then lastly, we continue to be committed to working with the community members and hearing and responding to their concerns. There were other comments, maybe not as strongly voiced at the community meeting. There are some additional things that we can continue to explore and look into that might make things a little bit more satisfying for those residents, and we're happy to do that. So we commit that there will be ongoing conversation in as much as those residents wish to engage. So that comes to the suggested motion. It's, it's written in the affirmative based on the resolution, which does describe or sets a position to oppose any efforts at de-annexation.
Let's point out, any questions for members of council for Shannon? We've talked about this at length. Chair, will it turn a motion?
I'll make the motion. I move to approve resolution 2024-05 opposing, formally opposing a de-annexation for properties west of the French Broad River.
I second it.
I think since there's no more discussion, all in favor, please raise a hand. That is 6-0. Thank you very much. Moving on to the third item in new business, a discussion regarding the Woodfinns' interest in accepting and maintaining the old Lester-Craggy Bridge. I'd like to make a statement before we start that conversation. I initiated by an email that I sent to North Carolina Department of Transportation. We, I've been part of discussions with Shannon's approval about water service, Woodfinn Water, there's a broken water pipe hanging, and learned that if the town expressed an interest in maybe someday possibly considering the potential of getting the bridge, it might open some doors for conversation. So I didn't, I did send that email, and the floor is now open for discussion among council.
My, my question about this particular item on the agenda is would re-establishing that water line on the Craggy Bridge help us moving forward and help the other entities with Woodfinn Water or MSD or anything else help us to get access for these services across the river? That's where my question lies.
So we've learned that, both from the engineer who originally studied the extension of service on the west side, that, and then also from the Woodfinn Water District interim executive director who referred the same things, that that line exists for the purpose of resilience in the river system and to provide redundancy. So it's, it's not the best line to provide or extend service across the river, with a very small exception, perhaps Hollyfield Drive, which runs parallel to the river and doesn't have a lot of elevation change. It might make sense to, if you were going to provide water for that. It might make sense to, if you were going to provide water for that road or for those properties, you would you would maybe use that line. But generally speaking, the value of that line is to provide redundancy in the system so that in the event that there was a catastrophe, though there's some kind similar to what Asheville experienced, then that would be able to be turned on and, you know, potentially backfill or backstop some some service gaps for a period of time. If you were to extend service on the west side with new lines, that water would be supplied from the ridge coming down, not from across the ridge going up.
Didn't he say that with an addition of a pumping station, it could go a little bit further up those roads? It would require that to do it?
Possibly, but it seems that the more effective and practical option would be to take service down from the ridge and not pull it from that line.
That's actually Asheville water.
It's it's part of Woodfin's water system, but they buy the water from Asheville. So it's it's it would be built by Woodfin. It would be based on their rates, but they buy water in bulk from Asheville for that particular line. It's not that that line on the bridge isn't a good thing to re-establish. It is. It would be in terms of community resiliency and just, you know, it's just smart, best practice to have that kind of redundancy in your system. So there is value to it, but in terms of extending a new service, it wouldn't be the one that we probably rely on, not significantly.
And so the new proposed bridge, whenever that comes about, they would not be willing to establish the line for redundancy purposes at all then?
If the line, so right now, Woodfin Water holds an easement on the old western ridge on the Craggy Bridge. If they were to reactivate the line, if they were to repair the line, it would reactivate that easement. And then NCDOT would be obligated to address that easement in some way. They would either relocate the line connection or make an exception and allow it on the bridge. If the line remains unrepaired and the easement's not being utilized and they go ahead and build a new bridge, they will not approve a new easement on that bridge. As a general policy, they do not allow water lines to be relocated or so allows to be relocated on the bridges. So they're moving away from that. But if there's an existing easement, they'll have to figure something out.
Okay, so you could petition petition them later on for that?
I mean, you could ask, but it almost certainly wouldn't do.
That's Woodfin Water's decision about whether they're going to repair that line.
Do we have any ideas to whether or not they're?
I do get the feeling that they're exploring it for the very reasons I mentioned earlier. It is it is of value, and to repair the line wouldn't be terribly costly. It's to replace the line would be more significant. To repair the line wouldn't be about that. And if for no other reason than just to to preserve future options and flexibility, it might be worth considering. So I do get the sense that they are looking at it and thinking about it. But again, it's not the best line for extending service. So I don't know whether to say.
I get that there's a water line with that bridge that's non-functional. Since it's non-functional, how does resiliency and redundancy come into place if it were?
This is the resiliency and redundancy happens when the line is active. So if it gets repaired, then that's the then that's the reason to consider repairing it.
And if the line were repaired, without an additional pumping station, what redundancy and resiliency would be accomplished?
You have to ask the engineer.
So my guess is for those existing neighborhoods that are right there.
That are right there.
You could open the valve up, and if there was a failure on one part, that it at least could divert water to the to Riverwalk and.
To somewhere. Yeah, yeah.
I think the current, or at least the current board chair of Woodfin Water Trustees was disappointed that the line had been broken for so long and that they had been publicly saying it's for resiliency. So it piqued his interest in.
How long is how long, by the way? Do we know?
I don't remember.
We didn't ask that question.
No idea. Do you happen to know the size of the line? And this is my background. I have a background.
But I know that it's not a big one. I would, I've seen a picture of it. I would guess it's maybe a six.
Okay, so that's enough just to trickle in.
Yeah, it's and that, I think, is part of the reason why you wouldn't use it to extend services because it doesn't have a lot of capacity or or pressure to move water very far. So it wouldn't like to go uphill because once you get across the river, you need it with your climate. So you would have to add additional infrastructure to move the water.
What's your question was then?
So as far as any federal grants that could be that they could look into in the future, does having that line help the cause? Like a lot, you know, sometimes when you present a, like you're going for a grant and you have to have something already in place to to suggest that you've looked at the idea beforehand, like the sidewalks, when they did all the sidewalks in Asheville. The reason why Asheville got all the money was because they had already had all the plans written ten, fifteen years ago that that. So would that come into play for any water grants that they could get?
So I think what you described about grants, that's absolutely true. A lot of grants I've seen, you know, you 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 are more competitive in your scoring if you have other things in place that help make that happen or guarantee that it happens. So having a line that's active to reach resiliency might give you a little bit bigger support. How that translates to their ability to secure additional funding, I don't know how much. It would probably depend on the way the grant, what the priorities of the grant are, things like that. I will say, I've tried to spend some time looking into available infrastructure grants for utilities like water and sewer. There is money out there for water improvements. However, most of it appears to be earmarked for water pipe replacement. So specifically copper and lead pipes that are now, there's a lot of federal infrastructure act money that's being trickled through to the states, and then the states turn on the district. But I think most of that money is going to go to that. I have not really found much, anything that could be used for water, new water line extensions.
Most of, and so I have several municipal clients who do operate utilities, and they, I think it's mostly viewed of, I mean, it is explicitly state law and enterprise. So it is, it's meant to make money and propagate itself. And so most of what they do, the money that's available to fund improvements and things are loans, basically. They're they're revolving loan funds for both water and sewer. And they do some scoring and some ranking of what your project is and how ready it is and what what service it would be. I mean, so there is a competitive aspect to it. And I don't know whether they, you know, how much it would help them to have a kind of redundant line that they may or may not use.
You know, when Representative Edwards, if and when he tours West Woodfin and he's interested apparently in this issue on water services, it might be interesting to ask a member of his staff that question about that particular line and how useful it would be to be active in terms of seeking, even if it's only an earmark. I say, I don't think an earmark is pretty powerful.
Do we have any sense of what timeline Woodfin Water might be on this exploration?
I don't. It's not a good question. I can certainly reach out and try to get answers to some of this and update you all on Friday, but. Yeah, I was trying to think of maybe that.
No.
I will admit, it's a bit of a chicken and egg problem. You're not gonna, you know, they can't go and say they're going to invest in until they know that there's going to be a long-term viability of the bridge and you'd have to, that's for them to know that would happen. And I have to say, too, I think of, I don't know that we've mentioned it yet, but there's a, I have concern about the liability you take on in the maintenance and just plain of liability because as a, as the custodian of of streets and sidewalks, you have a liability that's that's pretty wide open for having to maintain something. And so, you know, I don't, I don't think of maintaining bridges. That's a whole nother level just as hard enough when it's just on, you know, it's not crossing anything and.
We have, we have the example of Lake Lor. The town of Lake Lor is the single example I know of, but.
I would want to know what that.
Of course.
Regarding that, I kind of feel like there are, there are things you could do with that structure. I'm looking brainstorming. That'd be a fun discussion. There's also liability issues that we are just beginning to understand. Personally, I don't know where, I don't know what the plan was for the discussion. I'm not ready to have a discussion with that. It's more facts. And I also feel like this is the kind of thing, it'd be interesting to have people from the community weigh in on what they see here and if they would, you know, if they would see, they'd love to see it gone eventually or if they see some other, I I just, I feel like pretty ignorant about what the possibilities and the pitfalls are.
I'd second that.
There are lots of good things that could be considered, and my concern about asking the community for their input is, of course, they would like a bridge. Of course, they would like pedestrian bridge. Of course, they would like a guard bridge, all of these things. But I feel like we have to, I have to be responsible to the town and to the citizens here, and we struggle to maintain streets and strong water infrastructure to assume the fiscal responsibility of a bridge, not to mention the liability of that bridge, is maybe concerning. And I think that's, yeah.
Two things I'd ask you to note. One, that the design of the new bridge, nor its location, nor the funding for it, has not been approved. The design work preliminary is underway. And number two, NCDOT has offered to come and make a presentation to show us everything you want to know about the condition of the of the of the bridge itself today.
So Ken, to follow up on on your point about the the cost. So when Shannon's saying we don't, you can barely maintain streets, your neighborhood is actually kind of a perfect example, not to put it on the spot. We didn't take over the ownership of the bridges in your neighborhood for that exact reason, just because that, those, those however foot-long bridges are of a cost to maintain.
Municipalities typically, as you said, don't do this. They don't take over that.
And and so not, so I think there's going to be a, there's a cost benefit question that we should probably talk about, but I do want to like wrap up the water line piece first. I'm, I don't understand that there is, I mean, are we, do we give the water department any more time to make their decision by continuing to talk to NCDOT about this? Is there information that they need us to get from NCDOT to be able to make that decision?
The one exception I would take with that is that according to the head of maintenance, Tim Anderson for District fourteen, that they were going to look, based on the town's signal of an interest, they were going to tell their design team to be prepared to go to an option B that would include hanging a water pipe if that decision was ever made.
And and that's, unless I'm missing something, entirely contingent on what the water district decides to do. If it's active, they might have to have a water pipe on it. If it's not active, they won't.
You're correct. You're correct.
Which again, doesn't involve our discussion with DOT at all. And so the reason that I would, the the action item that we had before us before on this was whether to have any conversation with DOT about exploring the possibility of taking over ownership. There are two things that have happened since, since we had that conversation that I think make us at the point where I would be willing to end that conversation. And those two things are, one, we had the conversation at the retreat where we all indicated our buy-in for maintaining a revenue-neutral tax rate at the next revaluation next year. That is not going to expand. We are not going to have an expanded pool of money to work with. We're going to be at the same amount of income that we have. Second is we got the the cost of the actual Greenway Park project back, the Blue Way Greenway, and it's millions of dollars over what we have available. And so we know what our resources are and what our needs are. And for me, you can get as much information on what is the potential cost of maintaining a a bridge. For me, this is one of the rare instances where it doesn't matter what the answers to those questions are because if you're doing a cost-benefit analysis and on the benefit side of ledger, there's nothing, then you are able to make that decision as long as you know there's a cost. And so for me, because of DOT's complete streets policy where they are going to put bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure on the new bridge, there's not a clear benefit that I can see at all to maintaining the old bridge. We're already going to have pedestrian and bike infrastructure in the same immediate area. And at the point that we determine that there's no benefit to the town, and I'll say this not as a elected official, but just as a human being with twenty thousand and one hundred emails in his inbox, I think we owe it to the people that we're working with to not occupy any of their time if it's not actually necessary. I have a genuine and deep conviction that we should not occupy people's time unless we're actually intending to move forward with something. And I think I'm at the point where I know for a certainty, we're not going to move forward with this. And at that point, I think we should not occupy any more DOT's time.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
What you just said is interesting. First, I don't know that there is no benefit because we haven't decided what it could possibly be used for, and very few of them might be a bridge. But I guess my question is, does, is there a cost to keeping the option open right now? We may not be doing anything with it.
It's purely that relationship aspect that I'm talking about. I I think that, and I've said this in multiple meetings with this body in the past, that I think you only get so many phone calls to the same set of people before you're treated as non-serious and you don't have the same sort of political capital that you can expend with that group. And we are going to have to work with DOT all the time. I think we benefit ourselves by not occupying their time on anything less than the matters we're most serious about.
Can I add a third, Michael, that I didn't know when we first talked about this? Is we do know at least the pretty close sighting of the bridge. So we do have the site design for the bridge. So we know that it's going to land in Riverside Park. We also know that it will have piers in the water. We didn't know that when we first talked about this. And one, a new concern is how that affects the hydrology of the river and the design work for the white water wave. We've invested a huge amount of money in the design of that white water wave and the how, having, they contemplated a bridge in that design. They didn't contemplate two bridges. So that.
Is it also, we talked about that. That's a real strong point. Is it, just one other thing, is I've looked at the plans. It looks like the new bridge is going to be upriver. It's going to be, if if we're looking at it from the east side, it's going to be to the left. So the existing bridge, in effect, would obscure the view of the wave if it were left in place.
No.
No, I think it's the opposite now, isn't it?
Ken's right. I mean, it's it's to the, it's to the south. It's not, the new bridge is expected to be to the south.
NCDOT has said that decision has not been made and cannot be made until the bridge design is complete.
We have plans. I mean, it's been designed. We have.
Preliminary design, you've got a sketch.
Well, I think the installing of the bridge, the structural design has just been.
That's correct.
The siding and where to tie in the roads and stuff that's been done. And they have a construction schedule. It's been put off.
There's no money, there's no construction money approved. It's not anywhere on NCDOT's plan. The design is, the construction of does not exist yet.
I mean, we talk to them almost every week about progress on the bridge design and that work and the way it's been having all.
I asked in the latest MPO meeting, regional MPO meeting, and it wasn't on their schedule because it doesn't exist. It's contemplated for the future, but there's been no money allocated other than for the design of it. I made a joke and asked Tristan, will I live to see the new Craggy Bridge? And the conclusion was probably not. So, you know, this is a futuristic conversation. This council member makes a very valid point about the way he feels, and I don't disagree with it, but it's not costing us a dime, and it's not taking anybody's time up. At least that's what they've said to me. So however you want to do this.
Did I just take you, can I understand you kind of say that the bridge with the piers, that's not going to be happening for a long time?
We don't, we don't know, and they don't know.
And it's entirely, it's very plausible that that wave, significant work would be done on the wave before.
Oh.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to try.
The wave will be open before anything happens with the new bridge.
Yeah, but I think what we're hoping to avoid is having to re-engineer the wave.
Yes, we won't.
Although it raises the question.
Why would we have to do that? Because there's no bridge.
If the wave is implemented and we have the old bridge there and the wave is fine-tuned, now we put a new bridge in. We then go back and is there a cost to fine-tuning the bridge with the new location of the pylons?
The new bridge is so that the hydrologic. The new bridge is, so the hydrologic design of the wave contemplates the existing bridge, and it was known at that time that that bridge could be demolished and a new bridge could run, so there was, it was included in the analysis that there would be piers in the water. If you double that amount of obstruction in the water, it has the potential to change.
Right.
The hydrology, so the wave could, if you kept both bridges, the wave could have to be re-engineered at that time that that second bridge came in, in order to accommodate the change in water.
And one of my questions is of NCDOT is, is it possible that the bridge could be on the other side of the wave? And was told, yes, but anything's possible, we don't know yet. So there can't be two bridges, right?
Well, the opposite side of the wave gets really close to NSD's dam, or, so that starts to, it's unlikely.
You've got a lot of distance there, you've got a lot of distance there.
I guess what I want to, what I want to say too is that I think doing something like was contemplated would be a lovely idea, but I don't think it is an idea for Woodfin. I am incredibly concerned about the cost of tearing that bridge down, being on Woodfin, on the town. I think that would be just more expensive than anything that we could manage. I don't like the idea of having to readjust the wave, which is what we have been working on for years and years. If the water line does not matter, particularly at this point, I'm of the opinion that while I think it's a lovely idea, I just don't think it's right for us to put this in play right now, and that is just my opinion.
And you're, and I would like to remind you that the wave is not going to be engineered, it will be in business long before any new bridge is planted.
And I understand that completely.
Can I ask the?
It does not change my mind.
It contradicts what you said.
It doesn't contradict what I said. If they, if we keep one and put in a second, then there may well be cost that Woodfin would have to take on to address having two bridges there instead of one.
Mr. Lawyer, may I ask a question?
Please do.
I know that we talk about liability of sidewalks. Sidewalks are decidedly different than going over a body of water. People, so I'm wondering as far, do we have an insurance, insurance policy, kind of umbrella, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So would it change that policy's expense?
Probably.
Considerably then, not just like 20 bucks or?
I really don't know.
But it, because it is going over a body of water as opposed to just walking down the street?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that you get into sort of risk management questions that would come up, like now, you know, if somebody hops a sidewalk and wrecks into a sign and says this is faulty street design or maintenance or something, you're potentially liable for that. Plummeting 20 feet off of the thing into the river is a whole nother hell of a fish.
And so currently, that's DOT's insurance, not our insurance, the bridge, because that's a DOT road, right?
And there is, they do, the state has significant liabilities for DOT, it's all managed through the, it's, it's a lot of weeds.
Okay, so that's the lens that I was looking through, is like considerable extra costs in perpetuity, and that, that's where my concern is.
And to, the question of who's liable for it is driven by who owns it, maintains it, and if it's a DOT structure you take on, you're gonna buy that liability. I'm, I'm not saying that that is, you know, completely puts a fork in it, but it's something, somebody mentioned cost benefit analysis, and I think that's, you know, whether that's gonna balance out against a water line that might be, you know, I still, I don't know, you'd have to really weigh that out, it sounds like it's.
I was trying to tactfully sidestep that, I mean, because it could, it could fairly be said, be said that we don't know what the cost of maintaining the bridge, we don't know what the cost of the increased liability insurance would be, we don't know what the cost of the eventual demolition when it's reached the end of its useful life would be. I was trying to tactfully sidestep that because I don't think we need to, I just don't think we, I think that unless we think that there's a genuine benefit, which I don't, then we're done with the conversation if everyone agrees with that, but that might not be the prevailing opinion. I think if we're gonna be serious though, I think we all recognize that the cost of owning a bridge is enormous, but, but what exactly, however many zeros are attached to that is, is not, not known, I just think it's, I think it's not necessary to know that and still know that this is not a cost benefit analysis that shakes out in favor of the town ever owning that bridge, and if, if we all are agreed, agreed to that reality, then my point is, we owe it to our partner, DOT, to not occupy any more of their time.
Okay, everybody listen.
That's valid.
Okay.
I, I demur on one point, in that without exploring what you might use that bridge for, you can't say that it's a fact that we don't know the cost of the town, the cost, the benefit of the town would be, and I'm just resistant to the notion of what seems in a sense unnecessarily closing a door before it needs to be closed, but I acknowledge that at some point, of course, if it's not being used for traffic, it probably extends the life of the bridge quite a bit, depending on what you used it for, but I'm very sympathetic, we don't want to burden the town with that. I just don't like to shut off options before I think they need to be shut off. I'm not, I'm not gonna, I wouldn't, I'm not gonna die on this sword on this, but.
You're not gonna jump off this particular bridge.
Not gonna jump off this particular bridge, but I do, but I, I just don't like assumptions being presented as fact.
Making a decision without data is what you're saying, it's not a good idea. I think I'm getting the sense that the council, I'll recognize you.
I have one more question.
Please.
Eric, I was listening to what you said about being serious with partners instead of wasting their time, and it occurs to me that I don't really know what our relationship with DOT is. I assume that in general, it's about the various bridges over the water, the connector, you know, that we're involved in ongoing discussions with them about substantive projects that really are things that we've worked on. Are there any other issues that we're talking to them about that are not substantive?
DOT is funding how, how many tens of millions of the greenway?
A lot.
Right, so what I'm asking is, are there conversations that we're having with them on issues that are not substantive? If this is the only example, then I'm not too concerned about the issue you're raising, but if there are.
So what Shannon was starting, was telling you is, is the answer, it's, they are our funding partner, they're paying for the construction of the Woodfin Greenway to connect down to Asheville. They are an enormous partner on that front. There are secondary concerns like coordinating the maintenance of roads and things like that, if we need to try to have a speed limit change on a DOT road, we have to work with them, but the, by far, the largest relationship is that we receive tens of millions of dollars from.
Yeah, let me, let me make this, let me make this easy. I sit next to the NCDOT 14 district manager and the District 13 manager on the Metropolitan Planning Organization. They've assured me this conversation is a happy, pleasant one, they're happy to do it, nothing's being delayed, nothing's being spent. Having said that, I think it's time, the chair should ask if there's a motion redirecting the town's communication with NCDOT on this matter.
Eric, I'm happy to make that up. So I move to rescind the authority granted to have a conversation with NCDOT about potentially owning the old Craggy Bridge at any point by the town of Woodfin.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion? All right, a show of hands, all in favor, please raise your hand. That's one, two, three, four, five. All opposed, raise your hand. There's one, five one. Thank you very much. That concludes the near business agenda. We have found it necessary to go into executive session to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions, appointment of an individual public officer or employee, so at this point I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Consult with your attorney.
And to consult with your attorney, of course. Is there a motion to adjourn regular session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. We are adjourned, we'll take a quick bio break.